No gavel, so I just bang on desk. So at this time, I'd like to call our meeting here to order here for the Cadillac Planning Commission for October 26th.
This conference will now be recorded.
Twenty. At this time, if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. Mike didn't leave me a nice flag this time. So anyway, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic in which it stands. One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. At this time, Abigail, could we have roll call, please?
Philkin?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Bun? Is Schultz there?
Yeah.
Bun? Not into. Basher?
Here.
Baumann? Ben? The callers at home, if you could mute your phone, we're getting a lot of background noise. Ben? Putman?
Here.
And Greg?
Here.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. If everyone has looked over the agenda, I need approval for, again, the agenda here for tonight's meeting, October 26th, 2020. David, was that you first in it? Or Joe? Joe did, Mr. Baumann? Second?
I'll support.
Perfect.
John, this is Mike Coy. Did you see that note that I left there about? Okay, that's after this then. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna actually put it in after the approval of the minutes last month. Roll, please, Abigail.
All right, roll to approve the agenda. Greg? Dave, Greg? I believe you're on. If you could unmute your phone and say yes, please.
David, you must be on mute, David.
What caller is he?
I thought number one.
I just unmuted him.
David?
Hello?
There. We're doing roll call for the approval of the agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Yes or no, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Basher? You're muted.
Yes. What are we looking for?
Are you approving the agenda as well?
I have a question, I guess, for the group. Rolling into this tonight, brand new, there's some, you know, items that need to be voted on here with no background. Is it possible to abstain from voting until you have an idea what is going on here?
Well, I am going to be giving a presentation, and the applicants will be given a chance to present as well if they feel I've missed something on their project. So you should, you should be able to get a fairly, fairly comprehensive view of what the proposals are.
Okay. And Mike Coy, with respect to the minutes, I believe you could abstain from that vote because I don't believe you were on the board in September, so.
Correct.
The rest, you certainly can't vote on.
Do we have a quorum without Greg, though?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We do? Okay.
Approving the minutes.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on then. Schultz? I believe we were on. If you're calling by phone, you will have to unmute your phone. Do you know what caller he was?
I'm gonna guess three, but I'm not positive.
I can unmute three.
Mr. Schultz, are you on now?
Philkin?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
And Baumann?
Yes.
That give you enough, Abby?
That did give me enough, but if Basher abstains from approving the minutes, we need Schultz to be able to speak.
Okay.
I can approve. Okay with that, if you need it.
Again, this one's just on the agenda that's in front of you. That's all.
I approve.
When that went past, correct?
That did pass.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, at this time on the agenda, we have public comments. But just to clarify a smidgen, public can comment on anything except what's on our agenda. You will have plenty of opportunity to speak what is on the agenda pertaining to the public hearings. So if there's any public comment pertaining to anything else, you're wide open to speak at this time. Sorry. So at this time, hearing nothing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move along. So at this time, I would like to, let's see, I need approval, approval of the September 28th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 28th, 2020 meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you, Mayor Philkin, seconded by Mr. Baumann. Roll, please, Abigail.
Yes. Baumann?
Yes.
Philkin?
Yes.
Schultz, are you on now? Greg? Caller number one, if we can unmute that.
I'm muted, number one.
Yes.
Thank you. Basher?
Yes.
Philkin?
Yes.
Schultz, are you on now? Greg? Caller number one, if we can unmute that.
I'm muted, number one.
Yes.
Thank you. Basher?
Yes.
And Putman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I need to, I asked for a motion here to move new business, which is a property line adjustment here from Group Benito slash Rec Boat Holdings LLC. We would like to move that up to location four on the agenda and then move the public hearings down. So I need a motion here to do this change on the agenda, please. I'll go ahead and start it. I'll make, I'll make the motion here to make this change on tonight's agenda. Need someone?
I'll support.
Support, Mayor Philkins, thank you. Roll, Abby, please.
Baumann?
Yes.
Philkin?
Yes.
Basher?
Yes.
I don't believe Schultz is on. We'll go to Greg?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. So at this time, we're going to address property line adjustments, and I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Coy.
John, could you please put up that one slide of the GIS from 2010 showing the Rec Boat Holding Group Benito properties?
Okay.
Basically, I, I am the one who asked for the amendment or the change in the agenda. What we have here is the Group Benito Rec Boat Holding Corporation, they have realized that there are a couple of non-conformities with their rec boat plant with respect to property lines of lots they own. In your packets, I believe, Abigail emailed you a GIS that kinda shows some property lines, and it clearly shows the warehouse to the south and an extension of the plant, what I call the old main plant, 'cause I've lived here so long, to the east over two property lines. These are clearly what we call non-conformities, and what they would like to do is adjust the property line, combine the two lots, the one to the farthest north and immediately below it, and then do some other property line adjustments to the east, and the purpose is to eliminate these non-conformities and kind of have clear property lines in relation to, you know, the buildings. There is enough room on the east property line of where I again call the main plant, the old rec boat plant, plenty of room to move it to the east, and then the new property line would be between the engineering plant and the rec boat plant, and both of them then would be non, they would be conforming because they would meet the 25-foot setback. So what you're looking at now, the point I'm making is this is typically something I or John Wallace can approve administratively. But there is verbiage in the covenants for the Cadillac Industrial Park that says that, anyway, it says that the covenants read that alterations, including the site, shall be subject to the approval of the planning commission. So basically, because of that, we need to bring it before you, not just approve it administratively. Everything that they're doing here with these adjustments creates conforming size lots. The buildings of the main rec plant and the warehouse are now all conforming, they meet the side, the front, the rear yard setbacks. They are actually combining two of the properties, which is a simple administrative thing that can be done. So again, this is something that we, by the covenants of the industrial park, we need to bring before you, not just approve administratively like we would otherwise, and it kinda cleans up some property lines and eliminates two non-conformities of buildings. So what we're asking is that you basically approve this site adjustment of adjusting the property lines so that things are conforming. Do you have any questions for me?
I'll make the motion.
Roll, please, Abby.
Baumann?
Yes.
Philkin?
Yes.
Basher?
Yes.
Did we find Mr. Schultz anywhere?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, there we go.
You're here.
Good. Hey.
He found his leg.
I just disconnected and called back, 'cause I was like, I was unmuted on my phone, and I'm like, I'm here. So I'm here. I just called back.
You are caller number five, I'm gonna make a note of that in case this happens.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Would you like to approve this motion by Mike Coy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
I wanna quickly thank Rick and Trent from Group Benito. They, they attended and were available to ask any questions and basically as far as administratively supplying the survey and the legal paperwork, they, they are the two that, that John and I have worked with. Thank you, Rick and Trent, for attending.
Okay, we're good on that. Now we will go ahead here on the public hearings. So before I open it, I'm just gonna read the first one, write the second. So there's an application submitted by Fresh Coast Provisioning LLC of ECEK Holding LLC requesting a special land use permit to operate an adult-use marijuana establishment on property in the city located at 115 North Mitchell Street here in Cadillac. Having read that, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Wallace at this time before opening the public hearing.
Thank you, John. I'm going to give a review of the application, and then I will turn it over to a representative of the applicant if they feel that I've left something out or they feel the need to make additional points, but I'll be covering the basics for the application. The application is for 115 North Mitchell Street, Suite B. It is a lower level to a building that's within the downtown. The suite will be leased by Fresh Coast Provisioning from the owner, ECEK Holding LLC, an adult-use marijuana retail store, is a use which may be approved through the special use process in the B2 zoning district, and the entrance to the Suite B will be from Elk Avenue. As you may know from the marijuana ordinance, the city did not permit the entrance to a marijuana store to come off of Mitchell Street, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. We've already mentioned, this is for recreational, also called adult-use marijuana retail. The, I'll steer the screen now.
John, this is Mike. I'm not seeing your PowerPoint at this moment.
Okay, I'm calling it up right now. Okay, you see that? Do you see that?
Yes, John.
Okay. The site is somewhat close proximity, actually, to the city offices here. It's on Elk Avenue, the, the building's front on Mitchell Street, but also because of Elk Avenue, they have rear entries and parking to the rear as well. You see in this particular slide, they are proposing a slight expansion into the Elk Avenue to accommodate a handicap ramp, which I'll talk a little bit more at length later, but I think it's something that could probably be worked out, depending on the final design of that ramp, and it may also have to be an encroachment license obtained by the applicant from the city, which I don't think will be a big issue. The building in question, this is the current front facade, just so that you're aware of what it looks like comparing that to what it will be proposed for. This is the entry that will be the primary entrance for the retail store. That's how the building looks now. I'll be showing you some drawings of what it's going to be changed to. Okay, the, the building on the left is simply a demolition drawing, and it's hard to read that writing, but on, on the left side of the drawing where you see my cursor, one of the window panes will be removed in favor of putting in a access door. This will not be for customer use, but for other purposes, and I'll let the applicant address that. But on the right side of the screen, you will notice that there's a window above the door, a door put in. I've discussed with them, too, that there would, wouldn't be customer access, nor would there be identification of the business on that particular door. In the rear, there's a portion of the wall, again, if you look on the left side in this area, they will take out a portion of the wall, and that wall section that's coming out, they will install a commercial storefront. Again, this window, while opening to the interior of the building, you will not have visual quality to any marijuana product, and much of the building facade, other than the commercial storefront, will remain structurally or design oriented much the same. There'll probably be some upgrades, painting and so forth, but basically will be the same except for that commercial storefront. Land use analysis, basically, the site is in the B2 Central Business District. It's flanked on both sides by other downtown businesses. Businesses in this block are typically zero-lot line, buildings are totally side-by-side, adjacent to each other, much like you would expect in a downtown setting. The uses typically are retail, restaurant, and office development in the downtown. I won't go through all the consistency standards, but you've received my staff report, and basically, it talks about, does the use, you know, put any burden on our utility systems? Will it prevent or stop use of adjoining businesses and a number of different items like that? My, my assessment matches that of the applicant, that I believe they do meet the general standards in the ordinance. I do have my report available if you want to delve into any of that, but basically, I'd like to just not go into that for time purposes. And finally, my recommended motion would be to approve this special land use request application submitted by Fresh Coast Provisioning LLC as presented, subject to approval by the city of the rear handicap ramp that encroaches into Elk Avenue, and that the city grants an encroachment license for such, for such ramp. With respect to locational issues, I guess I should mention, too, that we're all, all these marijuana businesses, and I think we'll be handling two next month, I think the issue of where they should be located pretty much was determined during the process of adopting the marijuana ordinances by the city council. We reviewed a number of districts where they were appropriate, and in addition to the districts where they were appropriate, we set a number of dimensional standards for setbacks from particular uses like schools, residential dwellings, and things of that nature, and all of the proposed marijuana uses are in compliance, both with the districts that have been chosen, and they've also been in compliance with the separation distances which were called for in the ordinance, so just so that you're aware of that. But with that, if someone would like to, from, from, from the applicant would like to address or say a few, a few more comments, things you think I may have missed, or things you wanna point out, this would be the time to do that.
Yeah, thank you, John. Yeah, actually, I think we probably do wanna fill in a few gaps if, if we can take a few minutes, is that okay? Whatever you want.
That's fine.
True thing.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate the introduction, too. Good evening, commissioners, staff. Thank you again for the opportunity to let us speak on behalf of our company's special land use review for our property at 115 North Mitchell Street. My name is Nick Piedmont. I'm the CEO of Dune Grass. It's Fresh Coast Provisioning LLC, doing business as. We're a retail marijuana company. We're based in Traverse City. We have an existing adult-use retailer, it's less than an hour drive down 55 in Manistee, our second adult-use location due south in Big Rapids by the end of next month, and we have additional locations under construction in Beulah and Marquette, in addition to our project in front of you, good folks here this evening. Dune Grass is a family business. We've been working on this business now for almost four years. We're really, really excited to bring our Northern Michigan roots, our, our unique brand and our vibe to bear on retail marijuana here in Cadillac. We really feel like our property at 115 North Mitchell is the ideal location for us to have an outsized impact on the community positively. We're also confident that our project as proposed this evening meets all the general standards and use-specific standards according to the Cadillac zoning code, so we're very excited to break ground as soon as possible and get to work, so we're kindly asking you, planning commissioners, to approve our special use permit application here this evening. We have a few members of our bid team. Dusty Christensen from Mansfield Land Use Consultants will walk us through a few more details on the site plan. The building owner, John Kalerovic, will review the blueprint and our building plans, and my brother Eric is Dune Grass's chief operations officer, and I will be available. We can answer any questions pertaining to the sensitive use or our planned operations, COVID procedures, et cetera, et cetera, at, you know, 115 North Mitchell. With that, let me hand the controls over to Dusty, our resident site plan expert, for a few minutes. Dusty?
Thank you, Nick. My name is Dusty Christensen. I'm with Mansfield Land Use Consultants in Traverse City. As Nick just mentioned, we have been working with the folks at Fresh Coast on the site planning and engineering-related work for not only this project, but their other projects across the state. Between Mr. Wallace's presentation and Nick's brief introduction, we've pretty much covered all of the bases as far as the, the site plan is concerned. This project is relatively straightforward. The city did a good job of outlining zoning districts and locations within those districts where these uses would be allowed by special use. This location at 115 North Mitchell- uh, work for not only this project, but their other projects across the state. Uh, between Mr. Wallace's presentation and Nick's brief introduction, um, we've pretty much covered all of the bases as far as the, the site plan is concerned. Uh, this project is relatively straightforward. Uh, the city did a good job of outlining zoning districts and locations within those districts where these uses would be allowed by special use. Uh, this location at 115 North Mitchell is one of those locations. Again, as it's been mentioned, we're complying, um, with all of these site standards and regulations laid out in the zoning ordinance, including all of those from Section 46.752, uh, which are the additional, uh, regulations applied to adult use marijuana retailers and other similar, um, facilities in the community, uh, both from a site standpoint and from a building standpoint. Uh, generally, the lot on which the, the proposed use and the existing buildings sit, uh, is entirely covered by structure. So we have an existing building that, that basically, uh, hugs the lot line on every side, uh, has a building to the, the south and north that are adjacent, share a wall. Um, the main entrance to the upper level of the building is on Mitchell Street. And as Mr. Wallace referenced, uh, the plans are to put in an additional entrance, uh, an ingress egress door on Mitchell Street, which will serve as an emergency exit uh, for the proposed use on the lower level of the building. Um, the main entrance for the proposed use will be on the backside of the building on Elk Avenue facing out onto the public parking lot that currently exists, uh, with minor modifications to the facade there to allow for ingress and egress and accessibility to comply with the ADA and building codes. Um, again, we're here seeking your approval for this special use permit application. Uh, and generally, uh, the site plan has been covered to this point. I don't have a ton, uh, to add uh, in addition to what's been mentioned, so I'll, um, I'll pass the, the microphone over to John here to talk about the building itself and the renovations that can be expected. And I will sit tight and wait to answer any questions that are, that are asked of me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dusty. Thanks, Nick. Um, John Klarvik here. Born in Cadillac and now live in Traverse City. Uh, we've got a lot of friends there. We're really excited about this. Uh, from the building perspective, it, it couldn't get any safer and, compliance, uh, new furnaces, all new LED.
Hang on, John. I got all kinds of racket. I didn't pick up what you were saying. If everybody else heard what I heard.
Whatever I said was really good.
If you can get closer to your microphone.
Um, how about that? Is that any better, John?
Uh, much.
Thank you.
No, I was saying, we've, uh, we've, we met, uh, the Piedmonts a couple of years ago. This is not our only project that we're doing with, uh, with this company and, uh, this family. They've been, been fantastic to work with and, uh, go, go above and beyond when it comes to professionalism and how they operate. So it's been, it's been a treat. Uh, the envelope is pretty simple. Dusty kind of outlined most of it. Uh, we're going to, uh, we'll update the rear of the building, which is off the alley. Uh, that'll have a, a, a big glass storefront and that will walk into a main lobby area. Of course, per Michigan ordinances, you can't, uh, you're not allowed to see anything when it comes to marijuana. That's all going to be kind of locked down in a very secure location, uh, you know, buzzed doors in, buzzed doors out, uh, which will be great. The exit off of, uh, Mitchell Street is for safety and fire. So we have an extra, um, exit, egress first, so to speak. Uh, handicap accessible, upgraded ADA bathroom, and, uh, utilizing a basement that's not being used. And that's about all I can add as far as the site. But it'll look completely different when it's done, um, a few months from now.
Uh, John, uh, so the upstairs, uh, will be vacant as far as the appearance from Mitchell?
Uh, it will be vacant for a short period of time. There is going to be a new business occupying the Mitchell Street, uh, entrance, unrelated to marijuana, but it will be a eatery. Let's leave it at that. It will be, uh, applying for that permit to do that shortly.
Okay. Does anyone else on my board, uh, have any questions for John before we part with John?
No, sir.
Hearing nothing. Thank you, John.
Thanks, everybody. Much appreciated.
Does anyone else have any input before I open public hearing? Or questions?
Uh, Greg Bosscher here. Just one quick question. I'm sure the city has covered this. Um, essentially, we're asking for, uh, a special use. Is that for the handicap access that's going to bump into Elk? And if so, how far does that bump into Elk? And I'm assuming that if the city is good with it, it would need safety for the alley yet?
The special use is needed for the marijuana business. Um, the ramp is merely a site plan issue. I believe its, uh, distance, uh, is extending out about five feet. Uh, if you, if you look down the alley, it would be, uh, within the confines of, uh, there's an adjoining building that has a fire escape, uh, ladder. It doesn't extend out any further than that. And further to the north, there's some parking spaces that extend out, uh, that far. So I don't believe that if you, you're looking down the entire alley, that it, it starts to obstruct spaces that, uh, are not already obstructed, uh, by two of the other businesses in that block.
Thank you.
Mr. Coy?
Greg, I don't know if this helps, but if any part of the handicap ramp extends into in any way the public right of way of Elk, whether it be one foot or five foot, um, technically, city council would at some point be the one that would, um, you know, allow for that. Um, very, very similar to the side entrance that was put in the pocket park, uh, behind city hall, that kind of, when you walk from the parking lot to Herman's, that, uh, outside stairwell and entryway had to be approved, um, uh, because it is public property. So anything that, uh, if it's on private property, it, it'll be simple, but if it extends onto the public property, council will have to approve it, whether it be six inches, one foot, or five foot.
Thank you.
Hey, Dusty, do you have a sense as to whether or not we're entirely on private, private property there?
I do. I can, I can kind of fill in some of the blanks to the discussion on the, um, the accessibility issues in the handicap ramp. Um, currently, the, the rear facade of the building is right on the property line, so the proposed, uh, handicap ramp that you see on the plans that should have been a part of your packet, um, it does encroach onto city property, uh, off that rear facade of the building. Currently, the plan is for that handicap ramp to extend five feet off of the back facade of the building, uh, which is all we need to make up the four inches of grade change between the level of the parking lot and the level of the, the, uh, floor elevation on the building. Um, as Mr. Wallace mentioned, that, or maybe it was Mr. Coy, um, that handicap ramp extending out into the, the public realm uh, doesn't extend any further than the fire escape on the building that is a couple of doors down to the south or the power poles that exist in that, um, alley as it stands or the parking spaces. Uh, in addition, the driveline within the parking lot, directly adjacent to the buildings there, uh, would be left with a 22-foot, um, clear, uh, fan, which is, uh, a pretty standard width for a driveline in a parking lot. Um, and that would be from the, the very bottom of the shallow ramp, which is only four inches high at its highest point anyway.
Thank you for explaining that.
Will this have any issues with plowing that? Anyway?
Uh, right now, due to the, the, the location of the actual handicap ramp as it's proposed, um, it shouldn't present any issue with snow plowing. Um, there are other obstructions behind buildings, both north and south, uh, of this building, uh, that already extend that far into that, into the driveline that exists in the parking lot. Um, and again, it's a very shallow ramp, so then, as the ramp tapers away from the building, uh, it goes five feet horizontally to make up four inches of grade change, so, um, it, and the portion of the ramp that is closest to the driveline, uh, the elevation change is so minimal that, uh, that a blade from a plow truck would be able to float over it pretty easily.
I talked with, uh, Ken Payne, our street superintendent, and he felt that, uh, the details in the design, that the design could be such that, uh, snow plowing would not be an issue. So it's, it's just a case of, uh, uh, our engineer and our street superintendent to take a closer look at a detailed drawing of that ramp to, uh, make sure that it's, uh, the right design so that they can continue to take care of their actions that they need to do without, uh, without any problems.
Thank you, John. Any other questions from board members? Before I open public hearing? Okay, seeing and hearing none. At this time, I will open the public hearing. So if anyone in our audience, pub, uh, public audience has any questions or comments pertaining, uh, to what we've been talking about here with Fresh Coast, please, uh, speak up at this time. Good or bad?
Make sure you, uh, unmute yourself, uh, so you, so we can hear you.
Hearing nothing, uh, or, or they're like Mr. Schultz and can't figure unmute thing? Trying to give ample time in case there's people trying to get in?
John, I'll just add if anybody in the public does want to make a comment, if they would please just start off with their full name, so I can put that into the minutes.
Thank you, Abigail. I'm going to guess hearing nothing. I will at this time go ahead and, uh, close public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
Make the recommended motion provided by staff in the, um, PowerPoint presentation made by Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Support.
Mr. Greg, thank you. Abigail, please.
All right. Bowman?
Yes.
Milkins?
Yes.
Bosscher?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Putman?
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you. Gentlemen, it's been a pleasure that you joined us this evening and now you can move to next stages, correct, John?
Thank you, thank you, everyone. We, we really appreciate it. Thank, thanks for the opportunity. We're looking forward to moving forward and, uh, looking forward to working with the city of Cadillac. Thank you. Thanks, John Wallace, for, uh, putting all this together for us. Thanks so much.
Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next, find agenda. Okay, we have an application submitted by Christopher Enright of Visio Clara LLC requesting a special land use permit to operate an adult use marijuana establishment on property in the city of Cadillac located at 1250 South Mitchell Street. And having read that, uh, Mr. Wallace, please.
Uh, yes, we'll repeat the same process. I'll, uh, go through a PowerPoint presentation and then have the applicant, uh, address concerns they feel that they should address. And, uh, then it can be, uh, back to the planning commission for a clarification and then opening of the public hearing. I'll share my screen now. This, uh, special use permit request is, uh, by Visio Clara LLC. Uh, the applicant representative is Christopher Enright. And the requested use is for recreational adult use, uh, marijuana retail shop. Uh, the background on this, uh, application, it's, uh, a little bit different than some of the others you'll be looking at. Uh, for this one, we actually have new construction, so there would be more site plan issues than there would be on some of the others that we'll be undertaking, and that's simply because we are, uh, building, uh, they are going to be building a new structure and a all-new site development, so it's a little bit more involved. This property is, uh, currently owned by Sharp Dress Properties LLC. Uh, that's Brandon Butler who owns, uh, networking Butler, uh, joining the property to the north. The, uh, purchase option holder is Visio Clara LLC. And the, one of the unique things about the site plan is that, uh, the, the site that, uh, this applicant will be using is a portion of a, a larger site. Uh, Sharp Dress Properties will retain, uh, a small, uh, portion of their property from this lot, which will be accessed actually from the site, the site. Uh, it's a 12-space, uh, parking bay on the northeast portion of the site. Uh, the, uh, Sharp Dress Properties will have easements, easement rights to that 12-space parking bay uh, from, from this site development. And also, Sharp Dress Properties is retaining uh, a parcel of property to the west of the site, which is also uh, a portion of the site, so it's a, it's a little bit different. Uh, but as I show, show you the site plans, it'll, uh, be more clearly understood. Again, we're talking about a recreational, uh, retail marijuana store, also, uh, referred to as adult use. Uh, here you can see the site plan, um, the, uh, building you see there was a building that actually was demolished. Uh, I believe it was the old Hilltop Restaurant. And you see, uh, the property, uh, if you look at the northeast portion, you can already see, uh, a parking bay up in that vicinity. And when I show you the site plan, you'll see that that's, uh, been retained and, uh, while it's being shown on this site plan, it will be retained in ownership by, uh, Brandon Butler. Uh, you can also see that, uh, on the, on the site, there's a separate parcel to the west and access so that we don't, uh, uh, have excessive curb cuts. Uh, easement rights will be given to, uh, Brandon Butler to access that property to the west, uh, from this site, which makes sense in terms of not having, uh, too many curb cuts, uh, in a residential area. Here is, uh, one, uh, proposed site plan. You can see the concrete there. There's a remnant of the building. All of this material will be, uh, taken off the site, uh, when they build the, uh, new facility. Uh, you can also see, uh, some of the things that were left there. Uh, Brandon, uh, left, uh, certain materials there. I don't know if he, uh, thinks that those are... Brandon left certain materials there. I don't know if he thinks that those are able to be sold or otherwise used. But you'll see that my recommendation will be that all the remnant materials will be requesting that those be moved off the site. And that simply his parking bay will remain in that area. This is the site plan. This has gone through administrative review by our department heads. And so you'll already see some of the improvements on this version. I think one of the versions that went out to you earlier may have shown a curb cut onto Robertson. One of the things that we've done is to ask that that curb cut be taken out. It was located in this area. So essentially, they'll be working off of two access points. One will be up here on Mitchell Street and the second one on Robertson. Sharp Dress Properties will retain easement rights on the access aisle through the site. And that will be so that he can access his 12-space parking bay. And that he could also then access his parcel to the west of this particular site. So we've taken all that into account and looking at the site plan. The parking meets all the requirements. And I'll be going over some of the detailed site plan notes very soon. This is the proposed layout of the store. Much of this is probably more in the hands of the state in terms of their requirements for separations of how the different operations within the store operate. And they will be required to follow state requirements with respect to how the different building areas will be working with each other. This is the site view of the project from Mitchell Street. It's a very attractive building. One of the things that the city wanted to make sure that they did was to have some design standards included in the marijuana ordinances which were adopted. And having gone through the ordinance and reviewing this plan, I believe they've met the standard for architectural design standards for the building. The idea in the ordinance was that we don't just look at a long blank wall with a doorway, but there actually be some design style for the building. I think they've done that. You see that they've included the monument sign, which is really what we've been striving for on Mitchell Street for most of our businesses along Mitchell. Because we went through a design threat. Those were preferred sign styles that the public wanted to see along the Mitchell Street corridor. Some of the site plan issues, and I can go back later if you need to look at the site plan. As I mentioned, it went through administrative site plan review. And we reached concurrence with the applicant on all the issues. There are some loose ends to be tied up, but everything looks like it is going to be workable. The building meets all the setbacks for the zoning ordinance. The parking requirements have been met. In an earlier version, they were going with nine-foot-wide spaces. We requested that they go to a minimum of 9.5. They've agreed to do that. And the version that you're looking at tonight actually incorporates the new wider spaces. And the parking lengths will be 20 feet as the ordinance is caused for. So all the parking requirements are met. They have proposed one bicycle rack. I know that's a way, a direction that we're moving with through the planning commission as we're looking at a possible ordinance amendment to require that. And so that has already been proposed. Public sidewalks are being proposed both on Mitchell and on Robertson Street. They don't currently exist on Robertson, so we'll be seeing some additional sidewalk in the community. On Mitchell Street, the sidewalks will be designed to match existing sidewalk. On Robertson, they will be required to be five feet in width. One of the things that wasn't submitted, and we've requested, and the applicant will be supplying us something soon, was on a lighting plan for the project to make sure that the walkways and the parking areas have suitable lighting and is a safe environment so that people can see what is happening on the site. One enclosed dumpster location is being proposed on the north part of the site. A very detailed landscape plan has been proposed, and it meets all the zoning requirements. They've done a really good job of taking a look at maximizing what they could do with landscape on the north side where you don't have the ability to as much have eyes on the building or eyes on the parking lot. They've gone with a heavier screen of evergreen-type materials to screen the use from residences to the north. It's important through SEPTED principles, which is crime prevention through environmental design, to have a certain amount of visibility to the site. But that visibility would be created on the Mitchell and Robertson Street side. In that regard, they have used more deciduous vegetation so that some sightlines could be maintained to the building and to the parking lot. While at the same time, some lower-lying vegetation would screen the lower two or three feet of the parking lot to buffer the use, the site of the use or the asphalt from adjoining residential or from street traffic going by the site. So I think they've done a good job of maxing out what they can do with the landscape element. Access easements to date have not been submitted. I've requested that those easements be prepared. And again, the purpose of those easements on the site would be for Sharp Dress Properties to retain access, legal access, to his retained parking bay at the northeast and also his parcel to the west of this property. We also countered another issue. The building on the west end, a portion of, a small portion of the building actually was encroaching over a vacated alley. And the provisions of that vacation does not allow for the building to be located on that vacated easement. Now, there are no utilities running through that easement, so it's not an issue of obstructing or interfering with existing utilities, nor do I think there are plans. But nonetheless, it is a legal requirement. And so we've asked them to in some manner address that. Either to make the building smaller and have that portion that extended over the alley not do so, or possibly a slight adjustment in the building location. So I will let them address that during their comment period. Again, as with in the last case, having looked at all the general standards and the marijuana-specific ordinance standards in the more recent ordinance adopted by council, I believe all the standards have been met. And the answers to those have been included in the staff report. And they're mentioned one by one, all those different ordinance requirements. With this recommended motion, a few more conditions. My recommendation is to have someone make a motion to approve the special land use permit for Visio Clara LLC as presented, subject to the following conditions. They had a bicycle rack shown on the southwest corner of the building. I thought it would be more appropriate to have it located closer to the primary entrance. As I mentioned earlier, the submittal and approval of a lighting plan for the city that would be reviewed and approved by our city engineer. The preparation and recording of the access easements for Sharp Dress Properties so he could have legal access to the portions of the property he retains. To resolve the issue of the portion of the building that was over the vacated alley, the removal of all materials and signs on the property being retained by Sharp Dress Properties, compliance with all of the city engineer's recommendations. And you should have the engineer's recommendations in your packets. I think they were pretty straightforward. I don't believe the applicant had any issues with the engineer's recommendations. And finally, a final review and approval of all public utility plans by the city's utility department. So that is, you know, my recommendation to the planning commission. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
John, how far is the building over the vacated alley?
I think it might be something on the order of 10 feet. I haven't taken an exact measurement. Perhaps the designer for the applicant could comment on that. Chris, do you have an idea?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure whether you needed me to speak now or not. Yeah, John, I didn't have an exact measurement either, but I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of nine to 10 feet.
Okay. Have you had any discussion about how you want to resolve that? There's a number of different ways to do that.
Yeah, well, this is a larger building for us. Actually, our prototypes are somewhat smaller than this. So the building layout can easily absorb that nine or 10 feet of shrinkage in the back of the building and throughout. So we've already been looking at some of the spaces and we can easily accommodate that change.
Okay. I don't know that it's important to know exactly how. It's just we will have an approved subject to resolving that issue satisfactory.
Correct. Yeah, we have no issue with that at all.
All right, thank you.
Board members, is there any other questions for John before I have Chris take over here?
Yes, sir.
Chris, floor can be yours, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it, members of the commission. John, thanks very much for your hard work on this. I represent Visio Clara, which is Loom is their brand. Visio Clara is the holding company. And with us this evening, or with me, is John Abo, corporate counsel for, I refer to them always as Loom. Loom is the combination of two large Michigan forces. They are the owners of Belt Tire, Bob and Don Barnes, and the owner and originator of Warrior Equipment, which is now owned by New Balance Shoes, which is Dave Marle. So this group has gotten together to create what is now the company in Michigan that has the largest number of adult recreational licenses, 11 currently operating in the state. And we have approximately 25 more licenses that have been granted that are either in construction, development, or design, and Cadillac being one of them. So our closest location, I think, to Cadillac would either be Everett, which is the very first store, which is a very modest iteration in terms of a provisional center. However, what's also in Everett is the grow facility for all of Loom stores. It is, right now, it's a 50,000-square-foot development that's going under a large renovation addition with future plans to be around, I'm sorry, to be approximately 450,000 square feet. This facility will serve all of the Loom stores in the state of Michigan. So it's a vertically-oriented business where we are supplying, creating our own product and supplying the own product in all the stores. There's a location in Big Rapids, which is close by. However, what's more common is the developments that we're proposing tonight, which are ground-up construction, either through, in this location, which is taking an old site that was, has a demolished building on it, we have an adaptive reuse, or completely brand-new construction. When we get into projects such as these, it's obvious that, you know, it's a large investment for us, but we're used to doing it. And I represent the Belt Tire team that's developed and designed and constructed more than 100 Belt Tire stores throughout the Midwest. So it's the Belt Tire side of things of which John and I hail. And we're used to development of medium and smaller developments all throughout the Midwest. And it's the New Balance side of things that does all the marketing, all the packaging, and all of the promotional aspects to our business. So it's quite a successful and terrific group that we have the pleasure of working for. All of the products come straight from the Everett store in sealed packages and sealed containers. Nothing is ever opened to the air in terms of the marijuana product. It's delivered to the stores under complete security systems, which have upwards of 20-plus video cameras that are integrated. And we integrate closely with every local police department. There's at least one armed guard on staff all the time during operation of business. And so these projects have been up and coming for us recently, and we find them to be very successful. And most of the communities we do business in found them very successful, too. We intend to meet all the zoning aspects, all the standards for this facility. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as John. Thank you.
Board members have any questions for Chris or John? We got too many Johns here tonight. I got a Mike Boy thing, but I'm a John. But anyway. Anyway. Board members, anything?
Hi, this is Ryan Schultz. Is he going to be okay?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Okay, good. I'm gonna abstain from voting on this. I actually worked for Bob out at his resort in Everett. So probably smart for me to abstain from voting on this one.
Do I still have a quorum if Mr. Schultz drops out? Abigail? Thank you.
I concur with Abigail. And I definitely agree that Ryan should probably abstain.
Do I need to have a motion on that?
No, you don't.
Thank you, whoever answered me. Okay.
That's Joe.
Thank you, Joe. You're our attorney tonight. Thank you. Okay. If everyone's ready, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing here to the public. So if there are any public comments out there pertaining to Loom, please call in or unmute yourself or any variation thereof.
Yes, this is Dean Vivian. I'm concerned about the retaining wall that's on the north side of that property. Can you tell me what's going to be done to improve that, just in the cave-in?
It's our intention to have that wall replaced and make it structurally integral, so there's not going to be any concerns with that at all. So everything on that side of the property is going to be redeveloped and turned, you know, with the paving, all the improvements over there, we're planning on taking care of.
Will that be all the way across that north boundary then?
Well, it's going to go just to the edge of our property, which is about three-quarters of the way to where the, it looks like where the landscaping or the trees are currently right now. right now.
What about the balance of that property then? Does, I mean, is someone going to take care of that then, or how is that going to interface with yours?
Well, that's a good question. That's, we haven't broached that topic. I mean, that is, that's somebody else's property, that's a seller's property. I mean, we can always discuss that with them, but we have not taken that up at this time.
No, there's concerns by myself and our neighbor there about that retaining wall. And I'd like to make sure that's addressed either by you or by the seller and you, or however.
Well, John, I don't know if this is a question for you, or, I mean, if this is something that we can, you know, volunteer at this point.
Mr. Coy may have some input. Go ahead, Mike.
If I understand the site plan properly, the retaining wall will continue to be ownership of the current owner. And it is not on the property that Chris, your client, is going to be purchasing. I agree completely it needs to be addressed, but I don't think it's necessarily your issue at this moment.
Sorry, go ahead.
Let me put up the site plan again and go over what probably should happen. Let me share my screen.
Mr. Wallace is the owner of this property at our meeting here?
I don't believe so. So if you're looking at the site plan, you watch my cursor, there's this square where these, where the dumpster and the, and these parking spaces are. That is being retained by the owner of the property to the north, Sharp Dress Property LLC. This, it appears that this retaining wall would be, in this section, would be affiliated with this site development. If the retaining wall extends beyond this point right here, I don't think it would be the subject of this special use permit or the site plan review. So I think it's legitimate to talk about what happens in here and what happens in here, but not anything that probably extends beyond that point.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have the visual here, it's just on the audio here. Could you tell me how much of that property then, north of your proposed site, is still owned by Butler? Of course, that retaining wall.
The effective site plan from Mitchell Street right away is 294 feet. You know, if you, I know you can't see, if the right away line for Mitchell Street, if you back 294 feet, that is the area that the, is the subject of that site plan. There's a second, there's a second parcel to the west of this site, which is owned by the same owner, Brandon Butler. And that lot is not the subject of this application.
Okay, so nothing, just so I got it in my own mind, nothing on your proposed for this site abuts any of the properties of 117 Marble and 119 Marble?
Actually, no, that's, so if I could clarify, so the document that was up on the screen that it looks like you don't have the ability to look at, it's our, one of our engineered site plans, which is called, which is known as SHEP SP3, shows a continuous retaining wall that starts, if you go to, and it is on the adjoining neighbor's property, but we are in agreement with the neighbor because in order to create those parking spaces and put the dumpster in, that whole area up there has to be reconstructed. So I'm not, I'm not clear on what the actual agreement is in terms of the purchase agreement, but that in getting the easements put together, we're working obviously with the neighbor to accommodate all these improvements. So the retaining wall starts, and I'm just guessing here right now, it looks like it's about 20 feet west of the Mitchell Street right away. It continues westbound to the vacated alley and runs, then runs south at 119 Marble Street, and then it runs to 119 Marble, then west to 123 Marble. And then in our drawing, it shows three quarters of the way past 127 Marble. Now, that draw, that line there, too, would indicate that there's got to be some agreement because it's off of our site. But again, we, in working with, in conjunction with the seller and ownership or whatnot, are, you know, proposing that, that wall as shown in the drawing.
Would I be able to come to the city hall or someplace and see this picture, this layout?
Yes, you could.
Any convenient time that I would have to go there?
We can, we can make the file available during regular office hours. If you, it might help if you called ahead, if you needed to speak with myself or Mike Coy.
Okay.
Mike, you got more input?
Yeah, Dean, my extension at city hall is 102. If you call me, mind you, our GIS is from April of 2010, but I can show the vacated alley. I can show enough detail that I believe it will be helpful to you. I can email it to you, call me, give me your email address, I'll do that. If that does not answer your questions, then we can talk in more detail, but I believe that in itself may answer some of your questions.
Okay. One other question I have right now, a kernel, there's a stairwell going up towards that property. Is that part of the landscaping that we affected to?
Yeah, there will be a grade, there will be a few steps up to the property based on the grade change that's there right now. So yes, there will be some steps to the property based on that grade change.
So, no, I'm sorry, from that to the property of 117 and 119, where there used to be an alley, there's a walkway that goes from that property up to the stairs, up to the level of the site. Something going to be done with that, can you tell me?
The way that the-
Yeah, he's talking about an existing stairwell, I think.
Right. That, there will be no access from the public spaces. We're not, we're not going to make any physical accommodations to go from the private properties, the residential properties to our site. There will be an accommodation from our site to the site to the north for that dedicated parking, but there essentially will be a physical, not necessarily purposeful because of, it's because of the grade change, but there'll be a physical and visual barrier with the landscape and the wall from the residential properties to our property.
Okay. The last part of my question, will that existing stairwell be taken out?
I'm not 100% certain of what the stair you're referring to because I don't see it here in my drawing, I don't see it, but it, that, yes, that that's, that staircase-
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Ruth Ann, do you have any other things you might want to add on to that?
I didn't understand your question, Dean.
I'm wondering if Ruth Ann French is still on the line. She is, she's the top owner of 119 Marble Street, and it's in her backyard. And I wonder if she was still on the line. I think she called in.
I have a lot of caller numbers, Dean, but I have no names, so.
Yep. I think she was-
And we have any callers?
Yeah, she must not be on the line. She's not responding right now, I guess.
Mr. Coy?
Dean, yeah, we're, obviously, when the construction occurs, some detailed surveys are going to need to be done. If that stairwell is actually on her property, you know, that will be an interesting question just because if it's on her property, I would assume she can have it removed. Now, whether the applicant is willing to get involved in that, but clearly, I think more will be known once they get the site ready and get some surveys done for the construction.
Okay. I'll try to review that more when I come in to see the plan. Thank you.
If I could just follow up on that, I can see now exactly where he's, where he's talking about. On the survey, there is a, an existing concrete steps and handrail, about a 30-degree angle to our property that is on the neighboring property, which appears like it accesses this, the, our proposed project or the, our proposed property. As I indicated, we need to reconstruct that retaining wall all the way around, and it would leave a portion of that stairway on private property that we wouldn't necessarily have the right to touch unless we have permission from the owner, but we're more than happy to pull all that out.
I'm just thinking that she, I wish she had stayed on because I think she'd be concerned about, you know, foot traffic coming up and down through that on her private property.
Well, that's what, that's what you intended. Even, even if we left her portion of the stair there, I don't think that people could actually access it because of the retaining wall that we're putting in. The proper way to do it, to your point, sir, is to have the whole thing removed and to just grade it back out so it wasn't like it was never there. And I'm simply saying that since it's on private property, we would need her permission to do that, which we're more than willing to do, of course.
Thank you.
Mr. Coy?
Dean, a quick question I have, then. Is it under your understanding that she would like to have it removed, the stairwell and railing removed?
I don't know that for sure, but she was concerned about that retaining wall because it was failing. There was water and debris coming through the retaining wall currently, and that's why I was bringing up the retaining wall to begin with. But I would think, this is my thought, that she would want that removed.
Chris addressed that if they are planning on completely reconstructing it, if I'm correct, and obviously, you know, we'd like to know her intentions, whether she wants it left or removed, and at that point, we can move forward.
Understand. I can contact her and I will check that out, and I'll try to bring that information to you when I come in to see the plan. Or I'll have her contact you guys somehow.
That was about, so. Any other comments or questions, Dean?
Just regarding that right away, can you tell me of that old alley, where does that end then? Right at the retaining wall? Can you tell that? So I'll know.
The vacated alley, the one that runs north and south?
Correct.
That alley runs, on our survey, it runs all the way from Robertson Street going north, and it just continues onward going north. I presume it goes all the way to the next street to the north.
Marvel.
This is Mike Coy, I concur. It runs from Robertson to Marvel.
No, I was not, I'm sorry. Monroe completely.
Dean, it's Mike Coy again. I concur with what Chris Enright said. The vacated right away runs from Robertson north all the way to Marble.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know, but one across. Okay, thank you.
Are you, are you good now, Dean, with?
Yes, I'm good now. I'll try to get in tomorrow to take a look at that plan if it works out all right.
Your thing, and if you could bring-
Mike, is there a good time? Mike, would there be a good time for me to try to be there 10 o'clock in the morning, like at 11?
Dean, I will be there. I'll try and remember to do it right away. I can even put it in an envelope for you. I should be there at that time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I guess hearing no more questions, and thank you, Dean, for your questions and comments. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions before I entertain a motion? Any questions for anyone? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, be glad to make the recommended motion as submitted by Mr. Wallace to the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Do I have a second?
I believe it was Dave Gregg.
David, did you second? Yep. Thank you. Abigail, roll, please.
Yep. Botman?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Wilkins?
I apologize, yes.
Thank you. Bosher?
Yes.
Cole? Fish Roll, are you still on, caller number five?
He abstained, yes.
Oh, that's great. And Gregg?
Yes.
Thank you, Abigail. My gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thanks very much, we appreciate it, look forward to doing business in the future. Thanks. Take care.
Okay. Old business, we have none. Any board member comments this evening? Mr. Wallace, any other communications?
No, no communications.
Okay. I just have one last time here for any public comments pertaining to anything at all. Anything that was presented tonight now, or anything else? Okay, hearing no other questions or comments. Other business, there's nothing, and if everyone is good tonight, I'd like to adjourn this meeting, and thank you, everyone, for attending. There, there's my-